At this time, we would like to call the meeting of the Shreveport City Council Meeting to order. We ask that you have cell phones. We ask that you would turn them off or put them on silence. And at this time, we will have the prayer. And we can ask that Councilman Nicholson would give us the pledge. I will lead us in prayer. Thank you, God, for this day, and thank you for this opportunity. We ask that you come in our midst and church our hearts, souls and minds be acceptable in our sight. We ask that you come in the room. You are welcome in this place. We thank you for what you've done. We praise you in advance for what you're going to do. We ask that this meeting be operated in a manner that will give you glory and give you honor as we take care of our citizens and the business of this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The special flag is joining me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the mission of the Constitution of this country.
Thank you, dear county. Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Councilwoman Taylor.
Present.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Here.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilwoman Butcher. Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
I'm here.
And Councilman Bowman.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and the city council meeting Tuesday, February 22, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Has been both moved and second. Have any questions? Have any corrections? If not, let's vote. Thank you. That passes. We have two out of the chamber. Does any member of the city council have any awards, recognition, or distinguished guest not exceed 15 minutes?
Chairman? Either way. Is Mrs. Shirley Wills here?
Yes.
And Mr. Wills?
Yes.
I see you over there.
There she is.
How are you doing? Ms. Yu, would you please read the resolution?
A resolution that honors Shirley Wills for her many years of exemplary civic activism as a community leader and as the first African-American woman elected to serve on the Caddo Parish Police Jury. Whereas, on October 4, 1978, Shirley Wills was sworn in as the first African-American woman elected to serve on the Caddo Parish Police Jury, the predecessor of the Caddo Parish Commission, where she represented the communities of Stoner Hill, Anderson Island, and portions of Allendale and Highland. And whereas, during her tenure as a police juror from 1978 until 1984, Shirley Wills witnessed an era of extraordinary economic growth and infrastructure construction in northwest Louisiana. And whereas, as a member of the police jury, Shirley Wills successfully brought about improvements in street maintenance, solutions to critical drainage issues, and the increased availability of affordable housing. And whereas, she also played a major role in the equitable reapportionment of local districts within the municipality of Shreveport. And whereas, her public service, Shirley Wills has continued in her role as an active participant in community affairs. Whereas, Shirley Wills is a dedicated civil rights activist and an active member of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAAACP, as well as a former member of its executive board committee. And whereas, to promote a closer sense of community and to recognize the good works of past civic activists, Shirley Wills had Stoner Hill Elementary School renamed for an exceptional educator and the school's pioneering principal, Elijah B. Williams. It is now known as the E.B. Williams Stoner Hill Elementary Lab School. And whereas, Shirley Wills sought to honor the community activism and spiritual leadership of the longtime pastor of Hopeville Baptist Church, the Reverend Dr. C.E. Galloway. And with her persistence, Hopeville Street was renamed C.E. Galloway Boulevard. And whereas, in 2006, Shirley Wills dictated an oral history of her activism, culture, and professional life that may be heard at the Norton Art Gallery. And whereas, as a graduate of Shreveport Business College, Shirley Wills was employed by Western Electric, now AT&amp;T, for 32 years, beginning in 1969 until her retirement in 2001. And whereas, Shirley Wills was married to the late Joe Robert Wills for 52 years until his passing. Together, they made a Christian family home and reaped the many blessings of God's love, and their union was blessed with two sons, Reverend Gerald Wills and the late Gerardo Wills, and four precious grandchildren. And whereas, Shirley Wills is a longtime member of the St. Peter Baptist Church, where she is quite active as a Sunday school teacher and as a board member on the Mission and Deaconess Board. And whereas, Shirley Wills is empowered by her faith in God and is encouraged by her favorite scripture from Philippians 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." And whereas, Shirley Wills is well aware that educational opportunities are vital to the growth and prosperity of any community. She is an avid supporter of the Parrot Teacher and Student Association at Claiborne Elementary and Queensborough Elementary Schools and an active alumnus of Booker T. Washington High School, class of 1963. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport. Acting in due regular and legal session convenes that the city council hereby honor Shirley Wills for her many years of exemplary civic activism and as the first African-American woman elected to serve on the Caddo Parish Police Jury.
Mrs. Wills, I want to offer you an opportunity to speak, but first, I just want to say thank you so much for coming today. Thank you for your years of service. I'm glad to be able to be in a position to honor you during Women's History Month, specifically for your contributions and being the first woman elected to the police jury. But beyond that, you have been an active member of the Stoner Hill Neighborhood Association and an active resident and activist and advocate for Stoner Hill. I've seen you at many different functions in the neighborhood over the last few years, and I appreciate that while you could just sit down and rest and take your well-earned relaxation in retirement, you're still very active. And you set an example for all of your neighbors and for our community, and thank you so much for that.
Thank you so much, Mayor Perkins, and to this beautiful, beautiful council. And a special thanks to Councilwoman Fuller and Councilman Nicholson. Thank all of you so much for the beautiful proclamation. You know, I could just consider myself as a servant of God, and all of you do too. And I just want to say that may God continue to bless all of you as you strive to make our city a better place to live. Thank you.
Ms. Wills?
Right here. Right here.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to say thank you. I wouldn't let this opportunity pass without saying congratulations to you and your son. And also, thank you for tuning in each Sunday morning and watching the service. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Wills, thank you as well. You are so deserving of this. And I just thank you for all of the little contributions that you have provided to me with your wisdom. So God bless you.
Mr. Wills, did you want to say anything?
Well, now that I have an opportunity, I won't get into preacher mode, but I would like to say that we are very proud of the effort that you all are doing for this great city, and we're looking forward to working with you guys. And whatever we can do to help progress and make things better for Shreveport, please count on us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Taylor.
Mr. Chair, Madam Clark, would you please read Resolution 27?
A resolution proclaiming March 2022 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport. Whereas, in 1980, U.S. President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation for National Women's History Week, and in 1987, the U.S. Congress declared March as National Women's History Month in perpetuity. Whereas, annually, a special U.S. Presidential Proclamation is issued honoring the extraordinary achievements of American women. And whereas, Women's History Month is a dedicated month to reflect on the often overlooked contributions of women in history, society, and culture. And during the month of March, we give a little extra attention to all the amazing and compliments of strong, determined women. And whereas, the 2022 National Women's History theme, Providing Healing Promoting Hope, is a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic and a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. And whereas, women as healers hearken back to ancient times. Healing is the personal experience of transcending suffering and transforming it to wholeness. The gift of hope spreads light to the lives of others and reflects a belief in the unlimited possibilities of this in future generations. Together, healing and hope are essential fuels for our dreams and our recovery. And whereas, every woman has a story to tell and gifts to share with the world. And this year in particular, we are reminded of the importance of healers and caregivers who are helping to promote and sustain hope for the future. And whereas, these are women who, as counselors and clerics, artists, teachers, doctors, nurses, mothers, and grandmothers, listen, ease suffering, restore dignity, and make decisions for our general as well as our personal welfare. And whereas, the National Women's History Alliance encourages communities throughout the country to honor local women who bring and have historically brought these priceless gifts to their families, workplaces, and neighborhoods, sometimes at great sacrifice. And whereas, the 2022 theme proudly honors those who, in both public and private life, provide healing and promote hope for the betterment of all. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport. And due regular and legal session convenes that the Shreveport City Council designates and proclaims March 2022 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport.
Today, March 8, is Women's International Day. And what I want us to understand are the countless contributions that women have made, not only in the city of Shreveport, but the state of Louisiana and throughout this nation. As we look and we talk about gender equality today for a sustainable tomorrow, we must not discount our value or our work. It's why it gives me great pleasure to recognize women and their significant contributions to where we are today. We wear many hats. Sometimes we wear some hats. We get them all confused and have to learn how to sometimes turn them off. But I want to thank you, all of the women sitting in the audience around this harshest for your countless contributions that you've made, and to give yourselves a round of applause. With that being said, Councilman Bowman and I sponsored a resolution for the beautiful women of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And I have to make sure that I say that right, so I will not be frustrated by my sister, who is an AKA. I think almost everybody in Shreveport is AKA, which is a good thing. Well, today, we are recognizing you all for your efforts of 75 years of service, which speaks to who you are, what you have done, and your contributions to Shreveport, the state of Louisiana, and your countless contributions around this nation. So, Madam Clark, if you have that resolution, I would ask that you read it. And then I would ask Ms. Tari Bradford and the women of Alpha Kappa Alpha to please come forward.
A resolution to congratulate and celebrate Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Delta Lambda Omega Chapter, for their 75 years of dedicated service. Whereas, the Delta Lambda Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Sorority Incorporated was chartered February 3, 1947 by Mrs. Arnetta G. Wallace and will celebrate 75 years of dedicated service this year. And whereas, as the chapter's membership continued to increase, its priorities and goals expanded, serving Caddo, Bozier, and DeSoto parishes. And whereas, the first fundraiser of Delta Lambda Omega Chapter was a piano concert by Lois Towles held in the auditorium at Central Colored High School on November 18, 1947. And whereas, since 1949, Delta Lambda Omega has awarded scholarships annually. The James Sylvester Hall Senior Luncheon recognizes the top African-American girls from local schools, and during this event, awards 10 competitive scholarships to college-bound senior girls. And whereas, the Delta Lambda Omega Chapter has enthusiastically implemented a variety of programs, events, and educational offerings to enhance the lives of community members. The chapter is widely known for the Shoe Bank Program, which provides shoes and socks for underprivileged school-age students. And whereas, in 2018, the chapter was acknowledged as one of the longest operational programs by the national organization. Reading is fundamental. First sponsoring and implementing a reading program and free book distributions for over 40 years. And whereas, as a part of the Women's Health Initiative, the chapter partnered with LSU Health Shreveport to host the Feast Wyler Mobile Mammography Unit, which offered free mammograms on the parking lot of the Ivy Crown Building. And whereas, in support of the American Heart Association, the chapter's 2020 Pink Goes Red activity featured heart-healthy meals created by minority-owned small businesses and offered blood pressure checks and heart-healthy exercises. And whereas, members of Delta Lambda Omega render services to various community organizations, including Alzheimer's Support Group at Morningstar Machinery Baptist Church Life Center, donations of eyeglasses to Lions Club International, and multiple donations of shoes in support of the Souls for Souls. Financial donations have also been made to LSU Health Shreveport Office of Diversity Affairs, the American Cancer Society, the Northwest Louisiana Sickle Cell Louisiana Association, the NAACP, and Northwest Food Bank, and the Providence House, a family homeless shelter for women. And whereas, under the 2022 presidency of Ms. Charlene M. Forhires, Delta Lambda Omega Chapter has a membership of 281. As a premier chapter, they continue to offer educational programs, academic scholarships, and strive to make a positive change and support like-minded organizations. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport. Acting in due regular and legal session convenes that the city council hereby congratulates and celebrates Delta Lambda Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Sorority Incorporated for their 75 years of dedicated service.
And I think that's just a little bit of what you all do, because you all support so many other organizations and nonprofit in the area. I thank you for your countless support for those with disabilities, because your wavering support is just nonstop. So thank you so much. Ms. Tari Bradford.
Quick bit for Tari. I'd just like to say congratulations to you all. And of course, I got to call Tari's name, got to call Bernadine's name, and I got to call Ms. Monica's name. And congratulations to all of you for doing such a great work.
My classmate is right there with me, Ms. LaShonda Moore. And please, Ms. Bennett, okay.
Is that Ms. Bennett? Lord have mercy, Ms. Bennett. I am so sorry. And I got to call Ms. Bennett's name.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you all for this great opportunity. You know, this is outstanding for not only Shreveport, but the surrounding areas, Caddo, Bozier, and DeSoto parishes. Those are the parishes that we have been serving since 1947. And yes, you named a few of the things that our chapter does, but the list goes on. But we're proud of the things that we do in the Shreveport, Bozier, and surrounding areas. We're proud of our members. On behalf of Mrs. Charlene Voorries, who's not here because of family emergency, we would like to thank you for your continued support. Chair in the 75th anniversary is myself and Ms. LaShonda Lindsay, the co-chair. And please know that 75 years of service is a long time for any organization. We're not stopping today. We're not stopping next week. Mr. Chairman, know that throughout this year, until December 31, 2020, Delta Lambda Omega Chapter will be serving the community, will continue to serve the community. And yes, Mr. Mayor, we will call upon you to do some partnership in Shreveport for our young people, to show them that we love our city, but we love them as well. As we continue to move forward, know that Pastor Green, at this moment, I shall call you, Mr. Chairman, we would also like to partner with you and your church, because we have children that need to see women making a difference. And at this time, since we are celebrating Women's History Month, to Councilwoman Fuller and Councilwoman Taylor, thank you for your service, because you continue to lay the foundation for young women to know that they can do what you're doing, and they can eventually go a step further and become the mayor of the city of Shreveport. Not no time soon, Mr. Mayor, but in the future. With that being said, I would like to introduce our members who are here. Of course, you met Mrs. Monica Nichols, Ms. LaShonda Lindsay, Mrs. Connie Reynolds, and Mrs. Bernadine Moss Anderson, Mrs. Lisa Jackson, our vice president, Mrs. Barbara Bennett. That is all that we have. But know that any given time, you may see, and I think our resolution said 281, we're 300-plus strong as I stand here today. So we are your constituents. We're here to help you. We are your partners to make our city, to make our young people, better than ever. In the words of Bishop Brandon, "We are better together." Thank you and good afternoon.
Don't move. Don't move.
Really quick, I'm going to take the opportunity to say thank you so much for everything that you all do. I'm looking up at all these faces. And at some point in my life, I feel like you all have had an impact on me and me being here. Ms. Bennett, you were my middle school principal. Just, yeah. So thank you for that. I turned out okay. But no, seriously, thank y'all so much for all you do in the community. It means a lot to us and setting a phenomenal example for our young ladies in the community. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Jackson? I don't think we have any members of the Flurry family here today. Is that correct? Okay. Well, prior to reading Resolution 33, I kind of want to give a background story. I would like the audience to pay attention to the actual language in this resolution. The language was written in the present tense. This was decided by the council administration to do something for James Flurry prior to his passing earlier last week, for all of the commitment, dedications that he has given us over the years. He is the gold standard. And so we wanted to recognize him. So let's hear Resolution 33 again. Let's pay attention to the present tense of the language.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to place commemorative markers dedicated in the Southern Hills Park and Community Center Walking Trail in honor of former city councilman James Flurry. Whereas, James Flurry, a lifelong resident of Southern Hills, served nearly eight years of distinguished service as a District E city of Shreveport councilman until he resigned on November 15, 2021. And whereas, James Flurry served with integrity, dedication, and commitment, traits which in every instance impelled him to seek to do the right thing, and a service of the people of District E, the city of Shreveport, and Caddo Parish. And whereas, James Flurry's sense of fairness and commitment to community helped him to serve for nearly 20 years in elected public service, including 12 years as a justice of the peace in Caddo Parish, commissioner in charge with the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court, and auxiliary officer with the Shreveport Police Department. And whereas, James Flurry's dedication to service to the city of Shreveport and especially to District E should be celebrated and remembered. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport in due legal and regular session convenes that the mayor, on behalf of the Shreveport City Council, is authorized to place commemorative markers dedicated in the Southern Hills Park and Community Center Walking Trail in honor of former city councilman James Flurry.
Thank you. So this was never designed to be memorial. It was always designed for him to witness this. He was so instrumental in helping the Southern Hills area to be the second dog park in the city, as well as improving that area, improving the walking trails. So we wanted to do something to commemorate those efforts. The dog park beautification project is going to take about 90 days. So we will have a grand reopening, and we will present this to his family on that day. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any awards, recognitions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce the council, Michelle Andre-Pont. She is the Caddo Parish Defender. She's James Stewart's counterpart on the defense side. And while she comes forward, I just want to say, as I have said before around this horseshoe, that the defense function is critically important to ensuring justice in every criminal case. I know that. Danielle Brown, who's sitting up here with me, knows that well from her prior work. And I'll just give one example of a case I was appointed on about a decade ago, which really drove this point home for me. I was appointed to represent an African-American grandmother who was walking down the sidewalk in her own neighborhood one day. And the police executed a search warrant on a house, and they found a little bit of marijuana taped behind a toilet in a bathroom. But it wasn't my appointed client's house. It wasn't her marijuana. She wasn't in the house. She was unconnected to the situation, but for the fact that she happened to be walking down the road at 5:30 in the afternoon. And for reasons I have never been able to understand, she, along with many other people, was charged with possession with intent to distribute those drugs that were found in that house. And we had to go back again and again and again, until finally the assistant district attorney responsible for the case dismissed the charges against her. But to get it dismissed, we had to set a jury trial. So I say all that to drive home the point that when public officials, and this is principle of the state legislature we're talking about, choose not to appropriately fund the defense function, they are choosing to put innocent people in prison. And Ms. Andre-Pont is someone who has devoted her whole professional life to service in the defense bar. She's an incredible advocate. She leads that office extraordinarily well. And I just want to give her an opportunity to address the council and to discuss the importance of the work she and her colleagues do.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I am Michelle Andre-Pont. I am the district public defender for Caddo Parish. I would also like to introduce Mary Herod, who is our deputy district defender, the second-in-command of our office. Of note, especially today with it being Women's International Women's Day and Women's History Month, we are one of eight district defender offices in the state that is headed up by a female. I am very proud of that. Ms. Brown is a former member of our staff. Councilman Nicholson was on contact with our office, and I'm also very proud of that. As the head of the district defender office, I have never, and as Councilman Nicholson told you, I am a career public defender. I have been with this office in some capacity since 1994. Ms. Herod's also a career defender, having been with our office since 1997, excuse me. Yeah, that would probably be like she was a toddler. But since 1997, and myself since 1994. As public defenders, we have never believed that it is our job to get our clients off. That is not our responsibility. Our job is to protect our clients' constitutional rights and to protect constitutional rights for each and every one of us in this room. If we allow the system to trample on the rights of our clients, we're allowing it to trample on all of our rights. And that is what we believe our responsibility is, to protect and defend the rights of our clients in those particular situations, under those certain facts. It is our job to give our clients the best that we have to give them, to represent them to the best of our ability, but never our job to get our clients off. I just want to point out to the council, as Councilman Nicholson said, this comes down to funding for our office is always at a low. If you're not aware, public defense in Louisiana is funded, 51% of the funding for public defense in Louisiana is funded through conviction and user fees that are paid by our clients. We are the only state in the nation that funds public defense in this way. And that is absolutely backward. It creates an inherent conflict of interest where our office receives money when our clients get convicted. That creates an inherent conflict. And I am fighting every way I can with the legislature, through the State Public Defender Board, and through other organizations Board, and through other organizations that I belong to, the Public Defenders Association of Louisiana, for one, to increase funding for public defense in Louisiana, but not only to increase it, but to provide for stable, certain, renewable, reliable funding. I'm sure you're aware that the District Attorney's Office is funded through statutory items in the state budget. Public defense also gets money from the state budget. I don't want to mislead you at all. But there's a statutory requirement that the parish commission also fund the District Attorney's Office, and no such requirement exists for my office. They, at City Court, Shreveport City Court, the City Attorney's Office provides prosecutors for Shreveport City Court. I provide that out of my budget. I get zero funding as of this time from Shreveport City Court. I get my $45 fees, the conviction and user fees, but I get no funding from the court. I was receiving until this year $85,000 a year from the Shreveport City Court judges to provide a full-time public defender at City Court and to provide public defenders at City Court, and they chose this year to discontinue that funding. So, I've lost $85,000 in funding from Shreveport City Court. But I continue to provide public defenders for the needs at Shreveport City Court. At the district court level, we provide public defenders in all five sections of criminal court and at the juvenile courthouse. The DA's office runs their office on about a $10.5 million budget. Statistically, public defenders represent 75% to 85% of the persons accused of crimes within any particular district, and we do it on a $3.5 million budget. So, about a third of what the district attorneys are getting, and yet we're representing 75% to 85% of the persons accused of crime. So, I would just like to say, I will be back here when it's time for budgeting, to ask for funding for Shreveport City Court attorneys, to ask for additional funding for our office. We represent citizens of Shreveport. We represent citizens across Caddo Parish, but most of our clients are from right here within the city limits of Shreveport. And we provide, as Councilman Nicholson said, an essential function in the criminal justice system. The Constitution says that every person accused of a crime is entitled to a lawyer, and if they can't afford one, one will be appointed to them by the court. And that's who we are and what we do, and we take our jobs very seriously. And I just wanna say thank you so much today for giving me an opportunity to come here and introduce myself, to let you see my face, because you will be seeing this face again. And it is such an honor to be here in Women's History Month. How awesome is that? And especially today on International Women's Day, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we have real opportunity for leadership in the area of ensuring fair and equitable defense funding, and I hope we can take that up next budget cycle. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any awards recognition of distinguished guests?
I do, Mr. Chairman. An announcement, the Department of Property Standards is holding a, their next sweep in District A on Wednesday, March 9th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Citizens can bring trash, debris, and tires to the David Rains Community Center. Next, I have a lot of confirmations, appointments today. We have several confirmations and appointments on today's agenda. First, we have Chief of Police Wayne Smith. Can Chief Smith come to the podium? Think y'all have seen him once or twice. Does council have any questions for Chief Smith at this time?
We're all pulling them down.
I have one question. Who you with?
Shreveport.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'll say something. Chief, I, you know, it's refreshing to see somebody working for the city that takes so much pride in his job.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm hopeful that we can get this crime under control, but I think with you at the helm, with your passion for it, if you can't do it, I don't think anybody's gonna be able to do it.
Yes.
So, I just wanna let you know that I've got 100% confidence in you.
Yes.
And if I don't, I'll let you know between now and the end of the year.
I know you will, yes.
But right now, you have my support and, like I've told you in private, anything that I, as a councilman, can do, and you just let me know. And I appreciate the job that you've been doing and that you'll continue to do.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, the chair.
Yes.
Chief Smith, it is an honor for you to be in this position. I think that you are the right person for this job.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I know that it's, we're saddened when we hear about 14 homicides, but could you please tell the public how many arrests have been made with those 14 homicides?
14. That is unheard of around the world and around the country for 100% of your violent crimes for either someone has been put in jail and been incarcerated or one is already in the process. So, my folks have been working very hard, very diligent, putting in all the extra hours and time and effort that it takes to ensure the safety of our city. And I can't thank our community partners, our law enforcement partners enough. Never in my 42 years of being here have I saw such cooperation and eagerness within the ranks of SPD and with the other law enforcement partners that exist here to work together to find solutions to the problems that face Shreveport. And certainly, it is our intent and our promise going forward that we're gonna keep up that enthusiasm, that eagerness, to make Shreveport a safer city. And those partnerships are not only with our law enforcement partners. I'm one that I'll take help any way I can get it, and no, no effort is too small and too large. Not only is our partnership within government, it is with our community that we serve, which is, I can't, you know, place a value on the importance of SPD being responsive to the community that it serves. Over the course of time, sometime, law enforcement has gotten beyond itself where the community is police-driven, but we're now getting back to our roots where our efforts are gonna be community-driven. To the people that we serve, we're servants.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, SPD, and thank you to the City of Shreveport and our various communities for stepping up and supporting SPD.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
Just wanted to say, I talked to Chief before and I asked him, I said, 42 years is a long time. And I asked him why, and he told me because he sees brighter days ahead for Shreveport and he, he just has a willingness to serve. It wasn't about the paycheck. It wasn't about anything else other than wanting to see something better for Shreveport. And I just, that's what you've done. I can see the morale of the department is different. I just see a difference, and I want to say, I really appreciate you and the works and the efforts that you and your team have put together. I support SPD 100%. If I didn't, I think you all would know how I say it, but I appreciate you all 110%. Thank you.
Thank you. The City of Shreveport took care of me and had faith and confidence in me many, many, many years ago. Me and my family is well taken care of, and I pledge to spend my good days paying it forward back to the community. That's more meaningful to me on a daily basis, that feeling of gratitude when you have made a difference in somebody's life, when you've made somebody happy, when you have comforted someone in their moments of grief, as opposed to what has come to me otherwise. That's my passion.
Appreciate that, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Chief Smith, I also appreciate your leadership, and I further appreciate the sustained commitment that this council and this administration have shown to public safety. I think all of us probably made a commitment when we sought public office to prioritize public safety, and I think we've delivered on that.
Absolutely.
We've addressed concerns about compensation. We've provided significant funding for equipment, and I just want you to know that for so long as I serve on the council, public safety will continue to be a top priority for me, and I look forward to working with my colleagues to make sure that you and your officers have everything you need to keep this city safe. Thank you.
Thank you. It has been so comforting to me, as I've mentioned time and time again, during the earlier days of the appointment by the mayor, I personally talk with each of you, and each of you has shown me and expressed to me your concern for the safety of this community and what you expected the police chief to do. And I appreciate that guidance, that wisdom, and I pray that you hold me accountable for accomplishing that mission because it's about our community, not about me. And I promise to give it my very best to accomplish the mission of providing safety for this community. Hold me accountable, just as I'm gonna hold everyone else accountable within my chain.
Thank you, Chief. Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Chief.
Yes, sir.
It's the belief for me.
Yes, sir.
You believe in this administration. You believe in this council. Each time I talk to you, I grow more and more competence. So, it's definitely the belief for me, and I definitely wanna do anything in my power to help stop crime from a mental aspect. I know a lot of times y'all reacting to the crimes, but whatever we can, from grassroots efforts to creating programs, to give our youth something better to do than commit crimes is what I'm committed to do. So, like I said, it's the belief for me. Everything that you've seen in your 42 years.
Yes.
It could be easy for you to just say there's no help, but your smile, your tenacity, and because you feel like there's a brighter future, who are we to say that you're wrong? So, we're gonna definitely join in, hand in hand, and do whatever we can to make this city safer.
Thank you so much. Great days ahead of us for this city. I can guarantee you that. We're gonna spend a great deal of our effort in crime prevention. We would much rather prevent crime, keep people out of jail, keep our children safe as opposed to putting people in jail and having to clean up behind horrors. Crime prevention is gonna be a huge focus with us going forward. Thank you so much for that.
Chairman.
Yes.
Chief, I'm just excited about your leadership. We talked earlier today, you know, anything that we can do, any resources that we can make available for you, all you have to do is let us know. The numbers are already showing, since your appointment, the numbers are showing some positives for us as far as a decrease in violent crime. And then again, like you said, 100% arrest rate for the 14 homicides that have happened already this year, and that is unheard of.
That's great.
That's a testament to leadership. Like, I've already heard morale is up. The leadership is good. We were teasing about it yesterday, you and your deputy chief. I was like, what's going on? What's changed? What's different? And it took a while for the work on that routine, but it's the leadership.
Thank you.
And I, my dad says congratulations, too.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm just, I'm just excited. This is one of the best, one of the best things that could happen this year for us. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Thank you.
One last thing.
Yes.
I think that back around Christmas time, there was a picture of you and the Times with the, with a young girl at Target. And I think that sums up, to me, it was one of those deals where I think, you know, I get real emotional over crime and the deaths of young people and things like that, but when you have a chief that you can see in that picture, that could be like the picture of the year for me for Shreveport. And it kinda sums up the type man you are, so, again, I appreciate it, and anything I can do to help you, let me know.
I tell ya, I learned right away with the chief's job that it was no different than I believed life to be as it was before this. When you become a public servant, a true servant at heart, it is not Monday through Friday. It's from one day to the next. It's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Wherever you need it and wherever you're not needed, that's where you need to be. So, thank all of you so much.
Thanks, Chief. Next, I'd like to call up Susan Evans. Ms. Evans is on the agenda for the Human Resources Board, so I'll let Ms. Evans introduce herself and answer any questions from council.
Hello, Mayor Perkins. Councilwomen, councilmen, I'm Susan Evans. I'm a native of Shreveport. I've worked for Libby Glass for 38 years until it closed, but I have over 16 years of HR experience, and I think that I'll do well on the board. I have an organizational management degree. I've got three certifications in HR. I have a safety certification, as well as many years of experience working with the people in Shreveport.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Sounds like you have an ideal background for the position. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next, we just, we have appointments that won't be confirmed today, but we have our zoning board of appeals. We have Mr. Derwood Hendricks, Lorinda Henderson, and Alan Berry. And lastly, we'll have the Metropolitan Planning Commission with Chris Oberson, Gabriel Valderris, Rachel Jackson, Bill Roberson, and Harold Sater, Windsor Andrews, and Fred Moss. This last note is a bit of a somber one. I would like to close my remarks by remembering a city employee who recently passed away. Angela Welch was a dedicated employee for the City of Shreveport. She worked in the water department and was described as a motherly figure to everybody. During last year's winter storm, she actually slept at the Lucas wastewater plant. She worked as an operator, a housekeeper, and helped cook meals for the crews that were working at the plant. While she didn't have much, if someone needed something, she would find a way to help. She always went above and beyond in everything that she did, and she was a shoulder to lean on and an ear to listen to, and a best friend to so many in the department. So, at this time, I would like to have a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Welch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other communications? Please, one. Thank you. Does any member of the council have any other questions for Mr. Green? Property standards? Any member? Mr. Green, seeing there's none, you're free to go. Did everyone receive their revenue collection plan and implementation report on financial bill? Public hearings, I see there are none. And would there be any legislation added today?
There's none.
Thank you. Today, we will have public comments. We will only discuss agenda items. The vice chair will call the names and control the tone.
Sammy Mears speak on Resolution 932.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I'm speaking on Resolution 932. I think it's a great idea to dedicate the 500 block of East 84th Street in honor of Sam J. Coleman because of all the commitments and the contributions to the Cedar Grove community that this man has really given and worked for. He has, Sam Coleman has really earned it for everything he's been doing and has done. When people have done a whole lot of great things in a lot of great ways, they should really have something to celebrate and have it given to them because they have earned it, and it's to be recognized and needs to be recognized as well. Would it be fair if it was not recognized or those unrecognized? No, it wouldn't. That wouldn't be fair. Every time something happens good for a person, it does need to be recognized at once. And also, whatever the man has done, he has my respect as well. And as a PSA, the Church of the Holy Cross will be having their soup lunch starting tomorrow, March 9th through April 6th, at 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Church of the Holy Church of the Holy Cross on the corner of Texas and Cotton. The cost is $5, so please come for a good soup, dessert, and ice water. We'd be glad you did.
That's it, Chief. Thank you. At this time, we have the following executive appointments to be considered today. Madam Clerk?
Would you like me to read them all together?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman? Chief of Police Wayne Smith, Human Resource, Resources Personnel Board Susan Evans, Zoning Board of Appeals Durwood Hendricks, Clarinda Henderson, Alan Berry, Metropolitan Planning Commission Chris Elbersen, Gabrielle Valderes, Rachel Jackson, Bill Robertson, Harold Sater, Windsor Andrews, and Fred Moss.
Thank you. If there's no objection, I'd like that we would make a motion to consider all these together. So moved. Second. Has been moved and second that we consider all these together? Any questions? If not, let's vote.
We can't do them all together?
Okay.
And the motion due is to, is to approve them all, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
The motion carries with seven. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you. There are no items on the consent agenda today to be adopted. Madam Clerk, will you proceed with the regular agenda legislation?
Resolution 132 authorizing the mayor to execute an option to ground lease between the city of Shreveport and Shreveport H.P. Allenville LLC. Vote to postpone.
Second. Motion to postpone. All in favor, vote yes. If there are not any questions, thank you.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 165 approving a restoration tax abatement renewal application for Venue Solutions LLC at 601 Mylum Street.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Has been moved and second to postpone. Any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven. Postpone.
Resolution 21 recommending the Louisiana Board of Commerce and Industry terminate Inferno Manufacturing's tax exemption industrial tax exemption program, contract number 201-899-ITEp for noncompliance.
I move to withdraw this legislation and request discussion.
Second.
Motion to withdraw and second to withdraw. Question?
Mr. Chairman, I offered this legislation because we were advised that Inferno Manufacturing failed to comply with its obligations under a contract it had with the city to receive a tax break under the industrial tax exemption program. I'm withdrawing this legislation because the administration has communicated the city's position to the Louisiana Board of Commerce, and I wanna express my appreciation to the administration for prioritizing the implementation of an orderly process to assess compliance or noncompliance with ITEP tax exemptions and other tax breaks. It's, it's easy to say yes to businesses who come before the council requesting a tax break, and of course, that's sometimes appropriate and, and a good business decision for the city, but businesses that receive tax breaks need to meet their obligations to the city. And so, I hope that we will continue moving, moving in the direction as a city of making sure that every time a business fails to meet its obligations, to do the things it agreed to do for a tax break, that we will take appropriate action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I agree with Councilwoman Fuller.
All right.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 23 providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana on Saturday, December 11th, 2021, and to promulgate the results thereof. And there is one amendment. Amendment number one, it deletes the original proposed resolution number 23 of 2022 and substitutes the attached amendment number one to resolution number 23 of 2022. This amendment corrects a typographical error that occurs on the third line of the first paragraph of page 30 of the resolution that references proposition number four. The correct proposition is proposition number five. The same correction is necessary for the second line of the second paragraph on page 30.
So moved on the amendment?
Second.
There's been motion and second on the amendment. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Motion on the ordinance as amended.
So moved as amended.
Second.
Has been moved and second on the ordinance as amended. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Now that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 24 authorizing the employment of legal counsel to represent the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
That, that one has been actually postponed.
Postponed.
Yes. Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Has been moved and second to be postponed. If there are any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven. Postpone.
Resolution number 25 authorizing the execution of a legal services agreement with Washington and Wells Attorneys at Law, Baron &amp; Bud P.C., Cossage, Sumatch, Parisiola &amp; Taylor LLC, Foley, Lammy &amp; Jefferson, Alavendia, Kelly &amp; Demarest LLC, and Stag Louza LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and second. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
That motion carries with seven. Ms. Danielle, is your, is your mic down or are you talking into the mic?
Can you guys not hear me? No.
Can't hear you all the way around.
Resolution 26 authorizing the mayor to execute an active release of a 10-foot wide utility easement in the re-subdivision of King, partition number two subdivision in section three and four, township 16 North, range 13 West.
So moved.
Second.
Has been both motion and second. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 27 proclaiming March 2022 as Women's History Month in the city of Shreveport.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and second. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Resolution 28 to honor Shirley Wills for her many years of exemplary civic activism as a community leader and as the first African-American woman elected to serve on the Caddo Parish Police Jury.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and second. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven. Councilwoman Fuller and Nicholson.
Resolution 29 to honor Woody's home for veterans for the assistance they provide to veterans and their contributions to the city of Shreveport.
Motion to postpone.
Second.
Has been motion to postpone. Motion by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Boucha. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 30 to repeal resolution number 22 of 2022 which dedicated the 700 block of PO Street in honor of Charlie F. Williams.
So moved. Second.
Discussion real quick. It's moved by Councilman Boucha, second by Councilman Baldwin. Discussion? This is basically just to clean up a little bit of the legislation. There was, there was a mistake, so we're gonna clean it up. Any one else? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 31 to dedicate the 700 block of PO Street in honor of Charlie F. Williams for his commitment and contributions to the Cedar Grove community and the city of Shreveport.
So moved. Second.
First motion by Councilman Boucha, second by Councilman Baldwin. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 32 to dedicate the 500 block of East 84th Street in honor of Sam J. Coleman for his commitment and contributions to the Cedar Grove community and the city of Shreveport.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Should we postpone this, Madam Clerk, or did we wanna go ahead and pass it?
The families, you can go ahead and pass it and they'll pick it up at a later date.
Okay. They, they had a medical emergency and were unable to... Put a motion. Okay, okay, I'm, I'm motion to, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Has been motion by Councilman Boucha, second by Councilman Baldwin. Discussion? Councilman Boucha. The, the family was unable to attend due to a medical emergency, so I just wanted to make sure that they wanted to go ahead and move forward with it, so we'll go ahead and move forward. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Resolution 33 authorizing the mayor to place commemorative markers dedicated in the Southern Hills Park and Community Center walking trail in honor of former city councilman James Flurry.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, it has been moved by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Question by Councilman Nicholson.
I'm just noticing that there's a typographical error in the title of the resolution. It says trial where it should say trail. I love we wanna correct that before we pass it or how we wanna proceed. I think there'd be a typo in the permanent resolution.
The second. Amendments have to be in writing. I know somebody couldn't, we could postpone this at the end of the meeting if somebody could prepare.
Yeah, we'll come back to it. We'll, we'll delay it and come back to it at the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
So we'll, we would draw the motion.
Draw the motion. Second.
It's second.
It was motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilwoman Taylor that we would draw the motion and we would take up this business at the NFP meeting.
I don't know, it's the city attorneys. Are you guys able to prepare an amendment while we go through the rest?
Should we move to postpone until the end of the meeting? Is that the right procedure?
Yes, you can move to postpone this to the end of the meeting, which will give time for the amendment to be prepared.
So moved that we postpone this to the end of the meeting. Second.
Has been motion by Councilman Jackson, second by Councilman Boucha that we move to postpone this until the end of the meeting. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven. The postpone.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to March 27, 2022?
Resolution 34 authorizing the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Acesina Foundation and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Resolution 35 authorize any use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association and otherwise provide with respect thereto. Resolution 36 authorize any use of certain equipment by the Shreveport Bojor Sports Commission. Resolution 37 amending the eligibility requirements for the Department of Water and Sewerage Shreveport Water Assistance Program swap. Resolution 38 authorizing the city of Shreveport, Louisiana purchasing agent to reject all bids received from the water and sewer pipe bid IFB 22-005. Resolution 39 authorizing the donation of surplus property, specifically motorized vehicles of the Shreveport Police Department which are not needed for a public purpose to a political subdivision. Resolution 40 authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement between the city of Shreveport and the state of Louisiana Office of Community Development for the city of Shreveport Ocley Basin Storage Project and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Resolution 41, a resolution whereby the mayor is making a recommendation to the city council for its approval regarding the amount and type of all insurance premiums and to authorize the mayor to execute a payment to the agent of record for the purpose of finding insurance and to otherwise provide with respect thereto.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor, second by Councilman Baldwin. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with introduction of orders not to be adopted prior to March 27, 2022?
Ordinance 27 amending the 2022 budget for the capital projects fund and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 28 amending the 2022 budget for the street special revenue fund and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Ordinance 29 amending the 2022 budget for the capital projects fund and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Ordinance 30 amending the 2022 budget for the street special revenue fund. Ordinance 31 amending the 2022 capital, airport capital improvement projects fund budget. Ordinance 32 amending the 2022 community development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 33 amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 34 amending the 2022 general fund budget. Ordinance 35 amending the 2022 riverfront development special revenue fund budget. Ordinance 36 amending the 2022 capital project fund budget. Ordinance 37 an ordinance to create and establish the intersection of Fern Loop and Fern Circle as a stop intersection. Ordinance 38 to amend section 50-94 of chapter 50 of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances relative to division three of the criminal code offenses against property and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
Is there a motion to introduce these ordinance?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Taylor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Baldwin. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with ordinance and second reading and final passage?
Ornance 19, a serious ordinance pursuant to the general bond ordinance as defined herein, authorizing the issuance of taxable water and sewer revenue refunding bonds, series 2022, in a total principal amount not to exceed $190 million of the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, establishing certain details of such bonds as required by the general bond ordinance, approving and confirming the sale of such bonds, pledging the net revenues to secure such bonds, prescribing the form, certain terms and conditions of said bonds, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement in the preparation and distribution of an official statement, authorizing the purchase of and subscription for certain escrowed securities, authorizing escrow verification and engagement of escrow agents, and authorizing execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Move to withdraw?
So moved to withdraw.
Yeah.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Nicholson, second by Councilwoman Taylor to withdraw. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Amending the 2022, ordinance 20, amending the 2022 budget for the street special revenue fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 21 amending the 2022 budget for the capital projects fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 22 amending the 2022 budget for the street special revenue fund.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 23 amending the 2022 budget for the capital projects fund.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Taylor. Are there any questions? All in favor? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 24 declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair of Stoner Forest Main located along the Clydebank Parkway, starting just south of the Shreveport Barxale Bridge and ending at 70th Street, and ratifying the expenditure of approximately 3.9 million.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilwoman Fuller. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Are there any questions?
Are there any question?
And that motion carries with six.
Ordinance 25 to amend chapter 38 Arden... Ordinance 25 to amend chapter 38, article two, division eight, section 72 of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to the administrative cost assessed by the city for property abatement. And there is one amendment. Amendment number one, it deletes and removes from the files the original proposed fact sheet and ordinance number 25 of 2022 and substitutes the attached amendment number one to ordinance number 25 of 2022. This amendment revises language in the original proposed fact sheet and ordinance, which indicated the increase in lien recording fees at Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office occurred after the adoption of sections 3871 and 3872 of the Code of Ordinances on October 22, 2019. Further research has indicated that this increase in lien recording fees actually occurred back on August 1 of 2017. The amendment reflects the earlier date this increase occurred. And this amendment also corrects a typographical error in the fact sheet, which indicated the increase in lien recording fees at the Caddo Parish Clerk of Court's office was in the amount of $200. The correct increase was actually in the amount of 200 percent, an increase from $35 to $105. The amendment now reflects the 200 percent increase in the lien recording fees.
Say the last sentence again. The amendment now what?
The correct increase in the amount was 200 percent, which is an increase from $35 to $105.
There a motion on the amendment?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Baldwin, the second. Second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Danielle, we can't do that. Motion carries with seven.
Is there a motion on the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Baldwin.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nicholson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
The motion carries with seven.
Ordinance 26 zoning case number 21-201-C, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northeast corner of King's Highway and Thornhill Avenue, Shreveport, Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R.H.U. Highland Urban Conservator Residential District to C1 PUD Neighborhood Commercial District Plan Unit Development.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Fuller, second by Councilman Boucha. Are there any questions?
Just want to say something about this.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just a chain restaurant coming in, a donut shop. But the amount of modifications being made to this is what we should be expecting in any of our neighborhoods, and he's got six to eight more that he's trying to bring to this area. If you get bored and just need something to do, go back and watch. I'd encourage you to go back and watch the MPC meeting where this passed and see his presentation, because he was so thorough. And he is... When it's done, it's probably wouldn't be one of the better-looking things that we've seen as far as conforming to the historic standards that are already in the neighborhood. He's really got his stuff together, and I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Will the donuts be good?
I mean, if you're into that kind of thing, I guess. I mean, it's not going to be as great as the local bakery next, like, across the street. But as far as the way it looks, this is how... This is how the suburbs of Dallas get treated. You know, we want you to match what's existing, and y'all come in and comply to it. And we didn't ask him to do it. He came in volunteering it. But then we start saying, well, actually, can you do this? Can you do this? And he's like, yeah, absolutely. The bricks are going to match the church right next door. It's going to be great.
Any other questions?
Yeah. What would the... What would a citizen oppose to about this?
So the neighbors right there... So that's Thornhill and King's Highway. There's some residential behind there that was worried about the traffic, because it's already going to be competing with the existing traffic from the school. Well, this isn't going to be a destination. It's picking up on the existing traffic. He did a full traffic study, like, volunteered to do that and brought the report. It's not going to induce additional traffic. He's picking up off of the Byrd students and the people that are driving up and down to and from I-49. So that kind of made you wonder if there was something else behind it.
And the church supports this?
King's Highway Christian Church is in favor. This is their property they're selling to bring revenue back to the church. That's the thing right there, too. But the other churches on the other side had questions, but they relented. They're not here today, so I think that they decided that they're fine with it.
Emily and I got married at King's Highway Christian Church more than 20 years ago, so I guess I better give them their donut show.
You better let them have their donuts.
Any other questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Madam Clerk, do we have the last item available?
Yes, I've handwritten one. Do you guys have a type? Okay. I've handwritten one, which as long as it's in writing. We can go back to resolution number 33 of 2022. Amendment one to resolution number 33 of 2022 is to change trial to trail in the title and body of the resolution.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilman Jackson. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
Motion carries with seven.
Need a motion as amended to adopt.
So move as amended.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Baldwin, second by Councilman Jackson. A motion as amended. Are there any questions? If not, let's vote.
And that motion carries with seven.
Madam Clerk, is there any legislation to be removed from the table today?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We have no property standards, ABO appeals today. Are there any other appeals, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any reports from officers, boards, and committees? Madam Clerk, is there a clerk's report?
Yes, we received a letter of appointment for Tantula Hampton Silvy to the Shreveport Airport Authority. We received that on March 2nd, and it is subject for confirmation on March 22nd.
Thank you. Madam Perkins, do you have any other additional comments?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. Does any member of the council have any additional communication? Councilman Baldwin?
Just... It was brought to my attention, and I don't know how it slipped. Linda Long, a longtime employee. She was an accountant in the finance department. She passed also. I think she was a good friend to a lot... A lot of employees here. And just to... In case if you want to speak... If Casey wanted to say something about it, that's fine. But I just want to also make sure we recognize her and her hard work that she had and give another moment of silence if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. We see that is not an executive session. Is there anything else to come before the body?
Mr. Chairman, briefly, the Broadmoor Neighborhood Association will host a meeting on March 15th at 6:30 p.m. at the Broadmoor Presbyterian Church. Jim, the guest speakers will be Caddo Parish Sheriff Steve Prater and the two candidates in the upcoming Second Circuit Court of Appeal race, Aaron Lee Waddell Garrett and Craig Markcott. Thank you.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Mr. Chair, to reiterate what the mayor said, we have the MLK Clean Sweep tomorrow. So any contents that you have that you want to throw away, you can bring those to the dumpster at Davy Raines Community Center, starting at 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And those individuals that are disabled or elderly, you can contact me so we can arrange to have them picked up at 318-517-4392. And then on Saturday, there will be a mobile food giveaway with your Davyous White and Northwest Louisiana Food Bank, starting at 9:00 a.m. at Susla. Volunteers are requested. And you would need to bring a form of ID, either your driver's license, registered ID, or utility bill.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce Judge Waddell Garrett, who appeared on my radio show last week, will be on there again on this coming Monday. If there's nothing else to come before this body...